Okay, John, just give me one quick second, okay? Okay, this is just a disclaimer to be read before every meeting. The open meeting of the Menon Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Vega's executive order on March 24th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For the meeting, the Menon Select Board is convening by telephone conference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Okay, go ahead.
All right, we'll start with the first agenda event this morning, and that is I would need a motion on the floor to continue the public hearing for 49 Milford Street to June 22nd. At 7:15.
So who's doing it? Damon?
Nope.
Who made the motion? Barry or Damon?
Barry made the motion.
Okay, Barry. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Damon will second it.
Okay, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matter disposed.
Okay, so we don't, I'm sorry, so we don't have John here, right?
No, not yet.
Okay, let me know if he does join. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Uh, the second agenda item is the bond, submitting of the bond and the release of lots request.
Now was that great?
Who is, who is, who is on, on the meeting with us tonight? Lonny is probably going to have to pull up. Lonny's got to share the, the. You there Lon?
Yeah, I'm coming. Sorry, I just was getting John. John's trying to get it again now. All right, so which, which one do you need to see first?
First, we need to see the one I sent you just a few minutes ago that had Jeff Walsh's bond estimate on it.
Yep.
Might be in Greg's email. Greg, did you attach Jeff's?
No, I did not. That's the only thing I did attach because I figured you had a copy.
Yeah, I do. I sent it to you Lonny about a half an hour ago.
Got it.
So you're, you're looking over the bond estimate, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we're gonna share that. And there we go.
Bill, did you get my email?
Yes, I did. I've got all your forms there now, yes.
Okay, so you guys should see the Graves Engineering document?
Yeah, could you size that up Lonny?
Yep, just let me know when you need me to scroll down.
All right.
Good.
You could scroll a little bit. This Jeff's bond estimate, it appears everything's in order. And at the bottom, he breaks out the estimate for us.
Nothing changed to us originally?
Yeah, I reviewed it. Looks like Jeff did a pretty, you know, it's typical with Jeff. He did a more than adequate job.
I reviewed it for the board. Has anything changed since then?
No.
Okay, so I'm fine with it.
All right, so that's pretty much where we are right now. And Mr. Burl is presenting a bond for that this evening. So I need a motion to accept Jeff's, Jeff's bond estimate.
Yep.
So move forward.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to accept the bond.
Is that Barry or Damon?
That's Damon.
All right, you gotta let me know who because I can't really, okay, Damon makes motion to approve the bond, okay?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, so that takes care of the bond. The bond's been accepted.
Okay. Now the lot releases.
Let me get back to my document here. I'm just, I'm doing this off meeting here from my email that Mr. Burl just sent. And he, he's sent a note to myself that said, please find the attachment of understanding for the Metacotton Land Trust. Basically, all I need that, for that is a motion to allow me to sign that.
You already did that at the last meeting.
Oh, we did? Okay, so that's all resolved. Okay.
Yep, that's resolved, Bill.
Okay, so that takes care of that.
Have to do that, yep. And I have the original here for you to sign.
Okay, as well as conservation restriction?
Yep, the whole thing is in here.
Okay.
The whole packet, yep.
Okay.
Bill, real quick, just so you know, John is on the phone with us. I just got him on my phone. He's listening in from here. If he has anything to say, I'll jump in with him, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, yep.
In the last, the last document before we get to the lot releases is the bond itself, which has been issued by, Damon, do you have that? Could you put that up, please? I mean Lonny. It should, it should be in Bill, Bill's email, Greg's email, excuse me.
Yep, you got it.
The certi's 245,000, describes Applewood, signed, and it looks like it's been issued. I just need a motion to accept the bond at this point.
Make a motion to accept the bond is written.
Second.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Damon seconds.
Aye.
All right, let me just make sure. Barry made the motion, Damon seconds.
You got it.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just, could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Barry, make all the motions. Damon, use your second them all. That way, there's no confusion. Barry, if there's something you don't want to make a motion on, just, just state it at the time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Lonny. Makes it easier.
All right. So I think the, if you could take that down Lonny, the only thing I did not see Bill, and we can do it as a, you know, you can let us know what you need for lot releases and we take a vote on the lot releases. But generally, we have a form that Bob was supposed to fill out.
Yeah, I did. I, I did, Bill. You have that in your email.
Is it, is it included in there? Okay.
It's Form H, I believe.
Yes, it is. I sent it to Bob.
Yep, so, so that's there. That's there and properly filled out.
Okay, I've got town demanding letter, oh, Form H, there it is. Lonny, could you bring up that Form H, please?
So Bill, I had, I had Steve Greenwald fill that out, so that's got all of the proper recording information.
Beautiful.
Is Steve Greenwald an attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just don't, the copy.
It's in that last email he sent, Form H.
I, I understand. Well, I'm just not see Form H. I have it, but yeah, actually it's just not filled out. It's, it's the blank copy.
Okay, let me, let me, let me check.
Yep, sorry, just the one I have here. See it? I just plopped it up.
Oh yeah, I see what you're saying.
Okay, hold on a second. I'll send you the, sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. That was in the original email as well, Greg.
Okay, it was.
Oh yeah, oh, you're looking, no, it's, no, he's got it, he's got it here. The rest we have to fill out. Yeah, it just needs a signature. The only.
Sorry, I read it incorrectly. You're right. Hold on, you're right. That's my bad.
Yeah, I was looking for all eight lots to be released and.
Got it.
I would have been very upset with myself Lonny if I had sent the wrong one.
Yeah.
You think I wasn't gonna call you in the morning?
So, so there are eight lots that you need to release, and the ninth lot is an approval not required.
What are the lot numbers?
Yeah, Ron, is the 81P paperwork in here? Have you not done that yet?
So, so it's lot, it's lot one through eight. See, lots numbered one through eight is shown on subdivision plan entitled Applewood.
Right, but the ninth lot, you're gonna come in with the 81P later or?
Um, wasn't that, but isn't that just automatic because the plans were signed? So it's an approval not required in, in the original subdivision plans because it had its own frontage on now Providence Street.
But you're breaking it off a larger piece of land, so it really requires 81P approval, which is a simple task.
We could do that. Yeah, whatever you want, because.
Yeah, that's, it's a simple task. I mean, if you talk to Bob, he, he just, he can just forward the document for the lot to us and, you know, we can get it approved for you relatively quick.
Okay, wonderful. That's great. Thank you.
Um, the, Bill, Greg, the only thing we look at on that is to make sure, obviously, it has public access and number two, that it conforms to the town zoning bylaws and that there's enough upland and stuff like that. I mean, it, it's pretty fairly simple process for the 81P.
I think you would have gone through that when, when, when the, when the plan, when the plan was approved in total because that's, that's the first lot on the left-hand side going in. Lot one is the first lot on the right-hand side going in, and then it goes up and through eight.
Let me just take a look at your plan here. I have your plan in my folder here. Generally, when we do these, and Bob's usually pretty good about it, when he, when he does it, he usually comes in with an 81P on the lot, lots on the street. What is this?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, they're saying eight lots. I see more because I have a picture of the of the subdivision, and it looks like more than eight lots here.
No, there's supposed to be nine.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Oh, there's the open space. Okay, there's the open space.
Yeah.
Okay, and then there's the one that they're talking about, the corner on the left-hand side.
Correct.
Goes to the Providence.
Yep.
The frontage.
Yeah, see, that lot to the left. Greg, that lot to the left actually is included in the subdivision plan.
Yep, it is.
You want to just change it to, to one through nine then?
Um.
See, it was, I thought it was always considered, Bill, as an 81P. Okay, so, so that's why we only did one through eight because that was part of the subdivision with this lot, this ninth lot, which conformed to their current zoning.
Right, which usually, if you're breaking it off another. So you can record at the registry, generally, to break it off in a larger lot usually requires an 81P to do that.
Well, you tell me how.
I just, I don't want to tell you it's okay, and then you go and try and register the lot, and they have no record of that. You know what I'm saying? I don't want to create you havoc later for something that is a pretty simple process.
Let's do this. Why don't we release the lots one through eight, and then I'll get an 81P to you so you can review it and sign it?
Yeah, actually Fred's on the call, right, still?
Yes.
Fred, what is your, being an engineer, what is your take on that? I, that needs an 81, separate 81P, correct?
Uh, yeah, if it's not part of the definitive plan.
Yeah, see that.
I don't want those tonight.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, see Greg, I, I don't want to cause you any static when you go to, to the, you know, to the Registry of Deeds and all of a sudden you're like, well now.
Yeah.
You know, so I'd rather just do the process and we can get it done quick for you. I mean.
I, I have no problem with that. That, that's fine. I'll just, I'll get us, get you an 81P, get that to you this week.
Sounds good. We'll get it done right away for you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, so where'd I leave off?
So it is lot one through eight?
It's lot one through eight, and that's what he's requesting.
Are there two pieces of open spaceland?
No, it's just one.
Oh, there's two.
Oh, there's two. Oh, that's right, there is two. You're correct.
There's one between lot two and three. There's, it says open space parcel A.
We don't need to worry about those, Gail.
Right, okay.
We're only half a lot releases. We're not concerned with open space.
So my, so my intention, Bill, is, as, as indicated in the, in the memorandum of understanding, is that those open spaces will be deeded to the town, okay, prior to road acceptance.
Yep, correct.
Okay, and what I did is, when I sent the MOU, I also sent a check that was required, okay?
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
I have that.
Good, so, and, and this document looks fine. It, it indicates. Could you blow that up again, Lonny?
Which one do you want, bud?
Yeah, the lot release form, Form H.
Yeah, it should be up.
Yeah, it's just. It's shrunk down.
Oh.
Where'd you go?
Oh, wow. Go back to it. Ah, son of a bitch.
Here you are. I hope they're paying the extra for this line.
Yeah. Need me to zoom in on it?
I got a question.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, that's the right one.
Well, it doesn't seem to be sharing right now. Is it sharing right now?
No, it's not.
You had it and it's gone.
This one?
I mean, but before you had it all upright.
How's that?
That's good, yeah. So basically, gentlemen, it for those who can't read, I mean, at a regular special meeting of the planning board on the 11th day of May 2020, it was voted to release lots numbered one through eight as shown on subdivision plan entitled Applewood Open Space Community Definitive Plan of land in Menon, Massachusetts dated November 8th, 2018, and revised on 110, 124, 225, and 325 of 2019. Filed with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds, Book 944, Plan 26, from the operation of a covenant made with the planning board dated, will be today's date, which covenant has been recorded with the Worcester Registry of Deeds, Book 60832, Page 212. This release is given by the planning board because it received a certi. We received a certi on that. And so we've, Mr. Burl has met the requirements, so the skill performance of the obligations under the covenant in accordance with general laws, Chapter 41, Section 81U. Do I have a motion to approve the release of lots?
I have a question.
Sure.
The surety, is that, that's just for the open space, right?
No, that's for the road.
Oh, that was a 245,000 for the road?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make the motion.
To approve the release of lots?
One through eight.
Right, release the lot.
Okay, and Damon seconds?
Yep.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and am I gonna get copies of these original forms that you're talking about?
Yes, I will print them all out and I will bring them signed to you. I just, once again, we need to take a vote that I can sign these forms. Is representative of the board?
Oh, for the release of lots?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, let me finish asking the question.
Okay, so Barry makes motion to allow you to sign the release of lot forms?
Barry, did you make that motion?
I made a motion to release the lots.
Yes, I have that one.
Gail, I'll, I'll handle the meeting. Barry, I need a motion to allow me to sign the forms, Representative of the Planning Board for this, for the release of lots.
So moved.
I second it. Damon second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I was only asking, Bill. I wasn't trying to go above.
No, I just said, on these virtual meetings, if you keep, if everybody keeps talking, it's hard to keep them moving, so.
Okay, yep, sorry. All right.
So Mr. Burl, I think, I think we should be all set with you this evening.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate it.
No problem. Have a good evening, sir.
Thank you, and everybody stay safe and healthy. I'll see you later. Thank you.
Take care. Have a good night.
Bye, Greg.
Bye-bye.
All right, now, we, I think the last agenda item is Fred, correct? Shane Engineering, Fred Lappam, you're up.
Okay, I apologize. I'm just, I'm just doing the audio. I have no visual here.
We'll try to make that question descriptive.
Okay, it's, it's pretty simple.
Can you bring up Fred's drawing?
Yeah, I got, I have two. Which one do you want to start with, Fred?
Uh, the asylum street.
Okay, and I have two documents. I have the, okay, you want to bring up the plan. I got you.
Yep.
Okay, one sec. I'll get this blown up for everybody. How does that, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Option 128 or 12B?
Fred?
Yeah, that's 12B.
Is that the one you're breaking out or is it?
Actually, we're just, these two lots, 12B and 12C, they existed prior to the latest variants in a different configuration. What happened there was 12C is, it's a spacious lot, but the buildable area was much farther out back, and it wasn't, you know, it was cost prohibitive to build one house on that lot, the way it was configured. So the applicants, the buyers, and let's see, it was the Mateers. Mateer owns 12B and the buyers own 12C. They went back to the ZBA and they got a revision approved through the variance process. And things went on forward. 12C went through the building permit process. The, the house is actually built as you see it here on the plan. And, but the thing is, when the deeds were drawn up, they were inadvertent, the deed inadvertently referred to the prior plan again. So even though the intent is, was to buy the lot as you see it here on this plan, they actually referred to the wrong plan in the deed, so they gotta back up and do this the right way at this point. So what, what we have here, 12B and 12C, they are in agreement with the variance that was granted.
Okay, and the variance.
And this is, if you go down to the plan notes in the lower left-hand corner, it basically tells you, it gives you the lay of the land, if you want to call it that. The final statement is, this plan depicts parcels 12B and 12C as described in the variance and the supporting documents that were included with the petition for zoning variance submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, what? Hold on one second. What was the variance granted for? I mean, what do we have for upland and everything on these things? I mean, we should try and, I mean, we got, we, we've got access, so that isn't an issue.
Yeah, the, the plan states that each lot has over 60,000 square feet of dry land area. And that is, as it's always been, these lots didn't change one square foot in size. They just simply reconfigured and the.
Now, this is just, this is just for the banks, correct? Because it was, it must have been something that stuck out?
Uh, no, I, I just read the deed. I got the reference that the owner of 12C gave me because he is an attorney and he had another attorney draw up the deed. And when I read it, I checked the reference. I actually went online to the reference just to make sure it was correct, and it wasn't. It was the, it was the old plan. So there will be a corrective.
81P before on these?
No, it was sitting, it, it's been done since last April. But everybody on the, the owner's side, the attorneys included, thought everything was done.
Also, they assumed that the variance approval took care of everything. They didn't realize they had to distinguish the lots.
I, I guess. I, I really don't know exactly what, what went through the mind of the person who drew up the, the deed.
Yeah.
They just referred to the wrong plan. I'm sure they saw the letters and the lot numbers on the. Uh, they just referred to the wrong plan. I'm sure they saw the letters and the, the lot numbers on the plan and said, oh yeah, this is the right one, but it wasn't. See, the areas are exactly the same as they were on the original plan. It's just reconfigured.
Okay. All right, um, any members of the board have any questions? Well, based on the variance approval and, you know, you have all adequate uplands and, and dimensions, um, I did, I particularly don't see any issue with. Do, uh, do you guys have any issue with that?
No.
I'm fine with it.
So I'll make a motion to accept the eighty-one P as submitted.
I second it.
Town Street.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, uh, it looks like, um, oh, I just need, uh, once again, I need, uh, a motion to allow me to sign all the documents for this, uh, representative of the board.
So moved.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that should be, I think that's, uh, Gail, did we have anything else?
Um, the eighty-three, eighty-seven Northbridge Street.
Who's that?
Fred said there were two twenty-one Ps.
Oh, do you have those already?
I don't know. Fred said that he was gonna present them tonight.
Oh, Fred's got another one. Okay.
Yeah, I have two of them. No, that's all right.
Okay.
Fred, I've got eighty-one P stone building to, uh, oh, same document.
Yes.
Yeah, one's a document, one's a plan. Sorry, hold on.
Right.
Coming at you now. Okay, there you go.
Okay, so the plan's up?
Yes.
Okay. Um, this one, um, I'm sure you've all, uh, uh, heard about and had, had involvement in the stone building, the old Misco Springs bottling plant. Uh, that, that is the building shown on parcel eighty-seven here. That is the stone building. Uh, and what this plan accomplishes is it puts the stone building on its own lot and frees up the next door lot now because, uh, the line has been moved to accommodate the building. Eighty-three can now be permitted and built on and eighty-seven will have its own lot, which is adequate for, uh, preserving that stone building if that is in fact what happens. So the, uh, the little complication here, which is really not that complicated, but you can see the old, I have the old lot line on the plan. It's labeled old lot line. It's a dash line that runs right through the stone building.
Yeah.
See that? And if you follow that line a little further, you'll see that, uh, that line is shown as, uh, that lot between that line and Locust Hill Drive was lot seventy-two on the, the definitive plan as a subdivision lot. So we, uh, we got that lot released and I refer to that document up on the plan purpose note. Uh, that lot was actually released from the definitive plan covenants and this lot makes it a frontage lot with frontage on Northbridge Street, uh, the same as lot eighty-three, parcel eighty-three. They each have adequate frontage and lot width, uh, with the Northbridge Road, uh, orientation.
What about upland on that, on the lot?
Pardon me?
Is there enough upland on the, on the new lot?
Yes, in, in the, the boxed out lot data for each lot, you can see the, the last number at the bottom of that box is the upland area.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They each comply.
Very good.
Um, the only question I have is, do we need to do a revision to the, the subdivision, uh, the definitive plan?
Uh, I don't believe so because that lot is released from the covenants.
Oh, okay.
You know, that, that really takes it out of, uh, uh, any concern for it being.
This is parcel eighty-seven before also? You just re.
No, it was lots, it was lot seventy-two, which no longer exists. Lot seventy-two was, uh, you can see that line goes all the way to Northbridge. Yeah.
Yeah, I see that line. Okay.
Yeah. So that's gone and lot eighty-three wraps around it.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, they both have adequate upland area.
Okay, well, I, um, it certainly has plenty of access and meets dimensional requirements, so. What's that, what's that other line? Setback line?
Yeah, building setback probably, the dash line. Yes, that demonstrates lot width.
Okay.
That's why it has that distance on it, three-twenty-eight, forty.
Okay, I, I mean, I don't take any issue with it. Any questions for the other board members?
Good with it.
I'm good.
So I'll make a motion to accept the eighty-one P for partial eighty-seven and partial eighty-three on, uh, what's the name of the estate? Sullivan, Sullivan Springs Realty Trust.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, then, um, once again, I just need a motion to allow me to sign the documents of this, uh, representative of the board.
So moved.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I have the originals here, um, on those two eighty-one Ps, Bill.
Okay. All right, well, um, any other, any other, uh, questions by the board or old and new news or we, um?
Bill?
Yeah.
Uh, one question, uh, are you gonna contact me or should I contact you tomorrow to get the, that, those plans signed?
Uh, just give me a call in the morning, Fred. Now, I, I can go down and see Gail and get them signed.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Bill, if you, Bill, if you need a hand with anything, getting, getting anything signed or you need help with any of that, let me know too.
All right. I appreciate that.
All right.
What do you want now?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Fred. Um.
Bill, I have a question.
Yeah, Barry.
Yeah, when we do the, uh, public hearing for forty-nine Milford Street, are we doing that remote?
Uh, I, I have suggested we don't.
Right, because of, of public access.
Yeah, well, we pushed it all the way off to June twenty-second.
Okay.
So hopefully, at that point in time, I talked to Kim and she thinks that, um, that we would use a general meeting room upstairs and just create social distance and limit the number of people in the room.
Okay, all right, I'm fine with that. All right, that was my concern because if that remote, you know, public wouldn't have access.
Yeah, the, the, the public will have remote access if, if they're not allowed in the building. Like you said, we've, they haven't determined how many people be allowed yet, but I guess it's coming down this week. But it should be enough to get the board and the applicant in the room.
All right, okay.
Just a quick note, we can, we can do one of these meetings for folks to dial in, um, as well as, as on top of whoever shows up physically.
Right, yeah.
We'll dial in, you know?
All right, other than that, uh, we just need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye, thanks Lonnie for taking care of this for us. Made it much easier. Wasn't as bad as I thought it would be.
No problem, guys. Thanks.
Did a great job. All right, we'll see you later, pal.
John, you're good, buddy?